It must mean it's time to start. Are we ready to start, everybody? Call this meeting to order, the City Council. It's October 3rd. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And welcome. Good to see so many of you here tonight. Appreciate that very much. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Everyone is present, so we have a call.
Thank you. My eyes are still acting a little goofy, so don't think I'm winking at any of you or looking funny at you. I just have a little issue with my eyes right now, so I appreciate your indulgence there, I guess. We have an agenda before us. Is there any corrections or changes to that agenda before we consider its approval? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it's prepared.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling. There, second?
Second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We have the City Council minutes for September 19th. Any questions or concerns regarding those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they're prepared and go to the work session for September 26th. Same thing there. Any comments or concerns? If not, we will acknowledge those as well, and we'll go on to the bills. We've got a warrant register with today's date on it.
The big one.
It's a big one. You'll notice that the fairgrounds, our contribution through ARPA funds for the Fairgrounds Bleacher Project is in this tonight. So yeah, it is a fairly large.
Were they gonna, is that gonna include the bathrooms or any of that kind of stuff? Or how does that?
I honestly, I don't know. I do know that there's some things that way in the planning, what the timing of it all, that's all being coordinated and facilitated by the county. And so I think some of those things are in the planning, but I don't know the specifics.
So this was just the, what's there now?
Just the bleachers.
There's wheelchair access to where they're supposed to be.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
That's a lot better, but when it's muddy, it's inaccessible by wheelchair.
I think there's still a lot of work to be done.
There's a lot of work to be done underneath there. I just didn't know if that was.
Yep, yep, yep.
Great improvement, though.
But it's, yeah. And that is a little bit 905. That was, I mean, we had a million dollars in ARPA funds, and we offered that full million. So I assume that we might even have some contributions yet to be made with regard to them. I don't know, but we have. So I do know there's still plenty, plenty to be done before next season, I'm assuming. Is there a motion to approve the bills? I'll make that motion.
I'll second your honor.
Mr. Min, Mr. Perks, seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Takes care of the bills. Revenue and expenditure report for July. Any questions, concerns regarding that report? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling, Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That report is approved. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, what do you have for us tonight, sir?
Nothing to nightmare.
Nothing, that's all you can.
Perks, other than it's good to see a full house, that's all I am. I'm glad everybody's here.
Excellent. Yes, me too. Mr. Welling.
Not much, other than the homecoming, it was a success, and the football team won a great game. And the weather's changing, so I guess I'm supposed to start wearing a warmer coat, that's what I was told, so. But just be careful out there. We haven't got the plows on the trucks yet, right? We do? Take 'em off.
Now, don't do that, that'll snow.
That's true, so.
Leave 'em on, leave 'em on, maybe we'll.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Sellers.
So follow up on Mr. Welling is, as the weather gets worse, people get down, so be mindful of people who are suffering and might have mental health struggles and might be suicidal. Have them reach out. Remember 988, the emergency number, to share and get, you can get help. Just want to thank, from my position as council president, everybody who helped put on the parade. We had a lot of fun, and thanks, Diane, for making everything ready and available for us. And then, personal note, it's exciting that our street's finally getting redone. So it's kind of fun to watch them and watch the machines work, so. And it is good to see a full house. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hayman.
First parade was great. I still would love to see a lot of the people that make this body of, this body work. And those are the people behind the scenes, and in parades, we need to drag them along there. I'm taking Diana on my motorcycle next time. She doesn't know that. She's just gonna ride on back and chuck candy. But there's so many people than just the faces that you see here every Tuesday, and they should be celebrated as well, because we could not do our jobs without them. The other thing I have to bring, I want to say, is one of the just dearest members of our community, Kevin Callis, has suffered a heart attack. And he's, and his wife, Michelle, are gonna need to be in your thoughts and anything that you can do as he comes forward. He's out of ICU and better, and Michelle is finally able to get a good night's sleep. But talk about amazing, good-hearted people, and I hope that every one of us can reach out and do what they can, because I know for a fact they would if we were in need. So if we can keep that in mind, that's all I have.
Thank you. Well said. I think of many on this body have known Kevin and Michelle for decades, and yes, good people, to say the least. I have nothing to add, other than I guess would congratulate the high school on a very decisive homecoming victory. That was fun to, fun to watch, fun to see, so congratulations to our, to our high school football team as well. We'll go on to public hearings and special orders. Our first item there is a public hearing for call-up and review of the application of Tina Durand for a height exception. Mr. Harris, I suspect you'll be our hearing officer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mark Harris. I'm the Evanston City Attorney, and I'll be conducting the public hearing tonight. Today's date is October 3rd, 2023. This proceeding is being electronically recorded, and the recording will be considered the official record of proceedings. This proceeding is a contested case hearing and will be conducted pursuant to the rules of practice and procedure of the Evanston City Council. The hearing is being held pursuant to mailed and published notices, which will be included in the record. The applicant shall have the burden of proof regarding the application. The hearing will proceed in the following manner. Testimony and evidence is first received from Ms. Durand, who is the applicant. All persons who testify will be required to approach the podium, state their name and mailing address. Anyone testifying will be placed under oath. Any person testifying will be subject to cross-examination by anyone with an opposing point of view, and in addition, may be asked questions by the council members. The applicant will be allowed 15 minutes for a primary witness to present testimony and evidence. When the primary witness has concluded any testimony, then testimony may be received from anyone else who is in support of the application. The additional witness time may be limited by the mayor. When the applicant has concluded its case, testimony will be received from anyone opposing the application. All persons who testify will be required to approach the podium and state their name and mailing address. Anyone testifying will be placed under oath. Any person testifying will be subject to cross-examination by the applicant, and in addition, may be asked questions by council members. Any opposition to the application will be allowed 15 minutes for a primary witness to present testimony and evidence. When the primary witness has concluded any testimony, then testimony may be received from anyone else who speaks in opposition to the application. Each additional witness time may be limited by the mayor. Only relevant and material evidence should be presented to the council, and any party should avoid presenting unduly repetitive evidence. At the conclusion of testimony and submission of evidence, the hearing of evidence and taking of testimony will be closed. The council will then deliberate and enter a decision regarding the application. The City Council shall consider the application as submitted, the planning staff report, the Planning and Zoning Commission decision, and any additional evidence or testimony presented at the hearing. During deliberations, no further testimony or comment will be requested or made from the applicant or anyone opposed. The council may have questions of procedure and application of rules of law from the city staff or for the city staff. The City Council shall approve only those applications which it finds are in accordance with the regulations and standards of the code and the policies and intent of the comprehensive and other, comprehensive plan, excuse me, and other applicable city regulations, standards, and policies. In taking action, the City Council may approve, conditionally approve, specifying the conditions or limitations on such approval, or deny the application. All decisions by the council shall be followed by entry of findings of fact, conclusions of law, in an order. If the applicant is ready to proceed, would anyone wishing to present testimony on behalf of the applicant, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and I will swear you in. Ms. Durand, could you raise your right hand for us, please? Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you are about to give in this proceeding is the truth and the whole truth? Thank you. Go ahead, please, and speak into that microphone if you can, so we can make sure we can hear you, if you would.
I'll stand back a little. I live at 117 Citation Lane. I have been searching my neighborhood. I'm requesting a height exception for my fence. There is already a precedence that's been set in my neighborhood. And multiple properties in my neighborhood, and especially two lots up the street from my property, they have six-foot fencing that goes to the sidewalk. I do, I know there are photos in the presentation, but I also have some as well. The property that is directly affected by my six-foot is 121 Citation. There's been a visibility corner that has been implemented, and which will allow property safety visibility. Additionally, I've viewed his driveway. It is elevated, so there is more visibility that way as well. And because of the location, the street curves, so that adds additional visibility. I am not on a quarter lot, which adds visibility. My property, I don't know who has been up there in the council, but we are, behind us is a huge hill, which is unusable. We do not have a backyard. It is unusable space. So when my husband and I built the property, built the house, et cetera, we positioned it in an area that would allow for a larger area on one side of the property, so that I could have area for my grandchildren to play, set up trampolines, et cetera. I'm concerned with the security of my grandchild. I, I really, the four-foot fence, what is allowed is, to me, it's not enough security. There's, in my neighborhood, there are several that I have seen, there are several six-foot fences that go to the sidewalk. There is no setback. Sorry. I had to write down, because I am not a public speaker. Many of my neighbors have done this. I'm just requesting that I be able to do the same. They have provided security for their families. I would like to be able to do the same for my family. The proposed area of setback, the 20 feet, is 888 square feet. That is the amount of space I'm requesting to be able to fence. And the last thing I have, because of our, the area we live in, it is quickly approaching that there will be no more building, because it's just getting too cold. I don't want to have to go through this again next year, I really don't. Sorry, now I'm gonna cry. Sorry, when you talked about the heart attack, my husband died of a heart attack, so I kind of hit a nerve. I feel bad for them. He didn't make it. Anyways, I'm requesting, I don't have to do this again. I don't believe I'm gonna be able to do anything this year. And so I'm wanting to do it next year and not have to request the permit, et cetera, all over again, because it's winding down, and there's not gonna be any building going on. So that's, that's all I have.
Does anyone, any audience have any questions for Ms. Durand? Ms. Cook? You do.
So, do I need to say anything else?
You, yes, please identify yourself.
Kathy Cook, 912 Main.
Thank you.
Hi. Okay, so the six-foot fence, so this is where you want to put it, where the yellow line is?
Hang on, let me get my bearings. The six-foot, the only part that, this is where I want to, this right here is where I want to proceed. This, I'm gonna do four foot, and this will all be six, going around back in my company. This is the portion that I'm requesting a height exception.
Okay, and so I see there's no sidewalk, correct?
There is sidewalk.
That's a sidewalk? Okay, oh, okay. And so are you wanting to put the fence right next to the sidewalk?
You know, many of the neighbors in the area have, they went directly up to the sidewalk. If it make, if it's a problem, I will do the one-foot setback. That is what I believe the code, part of the code requests, is that you go back a foot off of the sidewalk. Many of my neighbors have not. They just fenced right up to the sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you. I know my count, my, I don't have a vote, but I vote for you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Ms. Durand? Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Durand?
I do. Can you show me on this picture where you want to put your, your six-foot fence? Because on the other one, it was a little hard for me to put in.
It's going to start here. This is the edge of my house. It's gonna start here. This will be four foot. This will be six, all the way up to a foot back, over, up, and then it's gonna go across my RV pad to the house. That's what I want to do.
So it's just that one section on the, on the?
The 20. Yes.
Just that area?
Right here.
And not on the other side? That's gonna be setback? It's open?
It's like, this is pretty much, as you can see, this is not a very big area, and this is all, this is all unusable. This is all hillside. It's all unusable. And so this side, I'm just gonna do a four foot back to the house, and then I'm gonna go all the way around with the six foot.
Is there any particular reason, because you're, you have the four foot on the one side, and you're okay with that, what is the reasoning behind the six foot on that one side?
That is the play area. There will be a six foot coming across.
Gotcha.
But that will be the play area for my granddaughter.
Okay.
Which will provide safety for her.
Gotcha.
So what materials are you planning on using for the fence?
White vinyl.
Any further question?
I do, before we move on. The, obviously, on this particular lot, I just want to make sure that, that I understand, the yellow, the yellow property line, the north property line, the one that goes left to right or east to west there, and that curve here is on the west end of that, that property line, in your understanding, is, is literally up above, up, up toward the sidewalk, right on the sidewalk, right? So this, there's a differential in this property, this, the layers of this picture that we're looking at, that doesn't correctly depict your property line. Your property line is up there by the sidewalk. Is that, is that your understanding?
Yes.
And then you, you mentioned that, that other neighbors in your prop, in your neighborhood have six-foot fences similar to what you would like to construct here. Is that correct? Do you have examples of those that we?
I do.
There's one in here.
Did I not look far enough?
Yeah, it's just right here.
I brought photos. I only, I have about eight on my phone. I can bring, bring them up if you want me to.
This house sits this way. This fence is right on the sidewalk, right to his, so it's right on the sidewalk.
It's considered a side yard instead of a?
You're doing great. You're doing great. But it's a six foot.
This. But that's a side?
That's the side, side of his house, but it's on the same side as the street that she lives on.
Six foot.
Mind if, mind if I ask a question, or you?
Go ahead.
I'm real familiar with this area. It's not that far from where I live. I feel like you have a very reasonable request, considering I do see all of the other houses with six-foot fences up against the sidewalk. I think you were denied it because of the, just the way the house sits and the way that the zoning and everything was, reads, because, yes, two houses down, there's a six-foot fence right up against that sidewalk. In several other circumstances, there's a six-foot fence up against the sidewalk, but they consider it side yard. Is that what you understood, is why they denied it? As I'm trying to understand, it seems like a very reasonable request, but it's denied basically because of the way our zoning and planning and zoning is, reads, right? Is that what they told you?
I really, I really don't know. They, all that I heard was precedents. That's all that was said. Other than that, they didn't tell me why they decided, they denied it. They didn't like the precedents that it would set. But there's already a precedent set in that neighborhood.
Well, and that's what I said when we decided.
I know. I was here for the hearing.
Yeah, it seems like there's already been a precedent set. So that's what I didn't understand and why their reasoning was.
I don't either.
Okay. I mean, I, I think it seems like a very, have you talked to your neighbor to the, that one side? Or they?
Yes.
How do they, how do they feel about your friends?
He has no problem, Brigham Cooper, he is a manager at Walmart, he has no problem with it. I've talked to several of my neighbors, because, you know, if they have an issue, I want to know, and they don't. I have my neighbor Gina Perks lives on the, or, I'm sorry, Gina. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I know your wife, I'm sorry.
It's a shocker for him.
My, my neighbor Gina, I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name right now. I don't remember a lot right now. But she has no issue. She is here. And Candy Hamblin, across the street, she has no issue. Raut Wulsebedra, he's the one that's been, because of my husband. Sorry.
It's okay.
Not being there anymore. He's been helping me. So they have no issue, issues, nobody has said that they do, so.
I guess my only concern would be that one neighbor there for, you know, being able to pull out of their driveway, but the way that road curves seems reasonable that they have plenty of line of sight pulling out of their driveway.
Yes.
Everything I've seen, it seems like a very reasonable request, so I'm, that was the only questions I had.
So you'll have a gate where your RV park is?
Yes.
Gate there? And on the other side, there'll be another gate?
No.
Solid fence?
Yes. Just one gate?
Just the RV park?
Yeah.
Parking lot, okay. I remember a few years ago, we had a lady on Main Street that wanted to build her fence, and we allowed her to build it right to the sidewalk, because it didn't make sense. Having a one-foot strip, you'd have to take your lawnmower outside your fence to mow, and we eat, and I don't see a problem going right to the fence in my eyes, so that precedent's already been set.
Any further questions for Ms. Durand? Thank you, Ms. Durand. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Could you please state your name and address for us?
Yeah, my name's Gina Fackrell, 115 Citation. I live right next door to?
And your, I'm sorry, your last name?
Fackrell. Sorry, my voice is kind of shot.
And your address, please?
115 Citation.
Thank you.
So I live right next door.
Can you raise your right hand for me?
Oh, yep.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Thank you, go ahead.
So I live, the house right next to, on the other side. There is absolutely, if you guys have actually been up there, like, we legit have no backyards. Like, it's just a steep hill.
True.
I don't have young kids anymore, so it's not a big deal for me, but they have this adorable little girl here, and she is obviously the light of their life. She needs an area to play, and it's just that side yard that they have. It would be kind of silly to not allow that, and if you have to have them cut back to the street, it's gonna cut out a lot of play areas for like a tramp or whatever. And because, and Tina's very upset, I know, it's just the three of them. And so it's very important for them that they have the safety, so that somebody can't just reach over. just reach over, try to grab that little girl, do something with her. And so I, it's totally a reasonable thing, at least in our opinion, and I haven't heard any of the neighbors complain that they should be allowed to have that whole section, have it all the way fenced off for a safety proceed, first phase D-wise, for this cute little girl, and so that they feel more comfortable. We all kind of try to keep an eye out for them, but it still is a concern for them. So, and I know that Brigham doesn't have any concern. He's on the other side. I have no concern. We'd be the ones that are be mostly affected, and we don't have any issues whatsoever.
You live on the, on the east side?
Yeah, I live on the east side.
Okay. Thank you. Any question? Council? No questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak?
Um, so...
Ms. Cook, would you please state your name?
Yes.
Address, and I'll give you an oath.
Kathy Cook, 912 Maine.
Would you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give and this proceeding is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
I just have one question. Why do you put, why did you want a four-foot fence on the other side?
It's for cosmetic.
And, and not a six-foot there as well?
It's not going across the, the area that she would be in. It's only going from where, it's only going from the house, uh, that's a, it's not a very big area. It's, it's not where it is going to, where she will be playing.
Okay.
Every area in the back where she will be playing will be six-foot. That one portion is just, um, in the front, dividing yards.
All right. That was all I had to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? I'll note for the record, there are none. Mr. Mayor, maybe what we can do is have Mr. Jacobson explain, uh, there were some questions about where the six-foot fence is located. He maybe has some photos, and, um, he can explain. Uh, one thing I think the council needs to be aware of is the visibility triangles that, um, you'll need to be aware of. Dwayne, can you show on the, on the map for the council, uh, what area we're talking about being closed by the proposed six-foot fence?
So the area that's showing you in the yellow highlighted area is the area that's just proposing to extend the six-foot fence into, six-foot fence is indicated by a red line that comes around to this place. So there's an option that you could do a six-foot fence on that edge of that, um, and leaving the front yard. I am still enclosing the yard. You have about 880 square feet of lawn area in the front that should lose from a play area for the kid. Behind that setback area, there is about 800 square feet of lawn. That's, I think, uh, area measurements, or area measurements that stretch along that back of the house, because, yes, I recognize that. With the hillside, she doesn't have much of a back there. So I, I can understand her need, you know, for that space alongside the play area.
There, there is one section of the code that, if I may, I'd like to include as you make a decision. So with the code, and I should have brought my, let me have my flat. Okay. So each, uh, part of the city code addresses the purpose and intent of, of the section of the code, and we have one as well for fences, hedges, and walls. I, I had spoke about this, uh, prior to Ms. Duran submitting her application for a height exception. I did not, uh, I, I did not make, uh, include that in the report, something that I missed. So I'd, I'd just like to go through that. So a fence, hedge, wall, column, pier, post, or any similar type structure, or any combination of such structures are permitted in the required yards of various districts, subject to the following conditions and requirements. So it is intended that these conditions and requirements shall provide privacy, protection, and screening, and accenting of shrubs and landscaping, without unduly interfering with the view from neighboring properties, or jeopardizing the safety of pedestrians and vehicles. So Mr. Duran has talked about fencing off the yard for the safety of the kid. On the other side, the flip side of that, there's the safety of the public, that's using the public right-of-way, the sidewalks, pedestrians on the sidewalks, you got vehicles backing out, and, and vehicles coming down the street. There is a projection with the neighboring lot to the west, and that, that may provide the additional visibility that's needed to access the street and still provide safe access to and from the street without causing any, uh, you know, jeopardizing any vehicle or pedestrian safety. So, um, and I, I guess, um, too, if you have questions regarding fences within street-side yards, it's been discussed that there is a six-foot fence that is two properties, just to the east of them. That is a street-side yard of their property, and our, our city code does permit six-foot fences in all yards, other yards, except for the front yard setback, which is a four-foot maximum height.
Does that six-foot fence on the side yard, is that to the sidewalk? Or does he have a foot setback also?
So we tell applicants, you can fence on property line, or within their property boundaries. Typically, and probably, I believe in this neighborhood, the property line lies somewhere about a foot behind sidewalk. There probably are people that are fencing right up against the sidewalk and that, but... I think we've had a couple of those come before the council to encroach with a fence within the public right-of-way. Not, not too many of those, but there has been some.
Dwayne, all of the neighbors here were notified of this meeting, previous meetings, and everybody was...
Yes, and there was nobody that showed up in opposition. At the planning commission meeting, there was no one to speak in favor of or opposed to the application.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask?
Please.
Mr. Jacobson, are the visibility's triangle, triangles identified on that?
Yes, they are.
So where driveways intersect on the driveway, there's a 15-foot visibility triangle measuring along the edge of the driveway, 15 feet long property lines, forming that triangle, and anything with MOs triangles should be kept free and clear, and part permitted within that area, but the maximum height is four feet and the asked DC. She's not proposing to do any fencing within those. She's proposing to angle the six-foot fence along the edge of those visibility triangles. I did show with neighboring property with their driveway, it's kind of disprachated there again. So entering along the edge, 15 feet, 15 feet that way, you have a visibility triangle. It does have a short little angle.
To keep the six-foot fence outside of that visibility triangle?
So those requirements are all met by her plans?
With the visibility triangles, yes.
And finally, do you have the photo of that fence in the, uh, side yard on that dim, on that? That, that I showed you that had written?
The street side yard just up?
Yes.
Wait, wait, I hear a mic.
He's gonna, he's, he's got a different.
Yeah, that's in our presentation here.
So that's the fence, that's a six-foot fence, and is that located in the side yard?
That is within the street side yard of that property. And I threw this photograph in for the planning commission's consideration, um, since, you know, they could look at a, a design of a fence. When I noticed that the upper third, or up, upper half of the fence was very visible and see-through, yet you still got, had the six-foot fence, I thought that might be something for the, uh, planning commission to discuss and, and consider. Does, I believe there is some cost in that, the cost of the fence, and that was, um...
Sure, that's expensive.
Ms. Duran said was a little too expensive.
Does this fence butt up against the neighbor that's right next to him, his driveway? So is there a line of sight problem with this fence other than it's open?
It doesn't butt against us.
That, I don't know. I can't.
I have.
I, I didn't take that information down when I was on site.
So that is...
That's your property?
Yeah, that's my, that's my company's, there's not a issue there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Jacobson? Thank you, Dwayne. Any questions, any questions from the council?
I don't believe I have any. If somebody else, any questions?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I declare this hearing closed.
Okay.
The taking of testimony has been concluded, and the council can now deliberate on the
So what I would assume here, if there is a motion to approve this application, then, then a yes vote would allow her to build her fences as she plans, and a no vote would, would, uh, would be a denial. Is that correct?
Correct.
The way everybody sees this? I guess for discussion purposes, I'll entertain a motion to approve this application.
I would make that motion. Motion to pass?
Well, you both did it in, in...
In stereo.
In stereo, so. I heard Mr. Sellers first, so you're making the motion to approve the request? Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn, do you wish to second that?
I'll second, yes. It's in our, it's in our area, so. I guess I'd prefer it's in...
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Discussion.
Yeah, I've been passed this, uh, home a million times. Well, maybe not a million, but thousands. When I voted against bringing this up, I thought it was farther down the street. I personally do not see a problem with the fence up there. It's a nice neighborhood. Uh, it's, it's not going to affect anything negatively. I believe the planning zoning, they, they went with the law and did their job, but I, I really don't see a problem with this one.
I think this is a perfect opportunity for this situation where they allow exceptions. This is a perfect opportunity to allow this exception, I think.
I agree.
I like going right up to the sidewalk, too, because when you have, like, Councilman Welling brought up, you don't have to go out there and mow, but that also, if they set it back, if, you know, you go, if we don't allow that, and that's going to make people plant stuff there. If they're going to have to go out there and fuss with it, they're going to plant stuff, and they're more likely to plant something that will uproot the sidewalk, and that causes more, and then they, there's debris from the trees where a clean fence, you just, that creates a better walkway for, and shoveling and safety and all the rest.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Councilmember Hegeman, um, one thing to be careful of is that, uh, that if, if it's approved, it should be up to the property line, wherever that is, not the fence, because this, or the sidewalk, it may not be on the property line. So you have to be careful with that, because you don't want to basically set an encroachment into the property.
It would, we, we would have the ability to approve up to her property line, wherever that property line is.
Correct.
Correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
You know, living in that area and driving that area, you got the other fences, and a house might be turned a different direction, and because it's turned a different direction, backyard becomes the front, the front yard of the side, and so all of a sudden, you're done the side yard. Yeah, and so I think, I think that hillside has laid the layout of those houses so different, different up there. And, um, it makes, it, it makes sense to me.
I also like the idea of a full fence, not the half and half. And the reason why is she brought up a security issue, and so, um, as a mom, you know, I see the half and, half fence is beautiful, but on the other hand, if there is a predator scouting children, they can see through it, whereas a full fence, um, there is no way to, for them to see what is behind that fence, and the security level is tremendously heightened at that point. Because even from, everybody drives a truck, you know, you can see right into, over a four-foot fence, you know, from a truck.
Further discussion? If there is no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? That is approved. Build your fence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I appreciate, and I'll just follow up real quickly, I appreciate the, the decision and the, and the discussion for the planning and zoning commission. I think they, they didn't, they didn't make any mistakes here, they just, uh, went by what they felt, and I think that's a valuable, valuable part of this process. So this, I don't think, uh, needs to shine any negative light whatsoever on any member of, any member or any decision of the, of the planning and zoning commission, it's just part of the process. Our next is a consideration for, of a petition for call-up regarding a, Mr. Osterling, a conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This matter involves the filing of petition for call-up and further review of the action of the Evanston Planning Commission on September 11, 2023, regarding CP 185, the application of Todd Osterling for a conditional use permit to allow a detached accessory building to exceed 60% of the square foot size of the principal building's footprint, and to allow the total of all detached accessory buildings to exceed 75% of the square foot size of the principal building's footprint for property located at 1600 West Center Street in Evanston, Wyoming. The planning commission entered findings of fact, conclusions of law, and a decision ordered denying the applicant's request for a conditional use permit. Mr. Osterling, the applicant, timely filed a petition to call up the commission's decision for further review. The planning office pursuant to ordinance and law mailed the petition to each party who participated in the hearing, sent the findings and conclusions, and delivered copies of both to the city clerk. By law, the city council at its next regularly scheduled meeting, which is today, is required to consider the petition, the findings, and any oral statements, and decide whether to call up the decision for further review. The acceptance of a petition for further review requires the affirmative vote of at least five members of the city council. If such affirmative vote is made, the council will then set and advertise and conduct a public hearing on the petition. The purpose of the matter before the council this evening is to consider whether or not to call up the matter for further review. It is not a hearing on the petition itself, and testimony and evidence is not considered. If the petition is not called up, the action of the planning commission will stand. Mr. Mayor, would the council like any oral statements regarding the petition?
I don't know that I need anything. Is there anybody else that? Is there anybody else that? I guess we, I guess that next thing is just a motion to, to allow the call-up.
Correct.
And then if, then if that, just so that we're all in, if, if, if an affirmative vote on that motion were to be made, and made, then that would allow the call-up, and then a no vote here would, would fall to the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to consider this call-up.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor. We need to move this along.
I'll second it.
Perks with the motion, Mr. Welling with second. Any discussion on the motion?
I got, I got one question, Dwayne. Where is he? There he is. If you, if he took out that shed, would he be at the 60%, or he's still going to be 75%? Where, where does that shed on the side come in?
The proposed garage, it was already over, the area allowed. The shed was in addition to that.
Thank you.
That answer your question, Mr. Perks?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
I hold myself. So how many ayes do we have? Who all voted aye? One, two?
Aye.
Three? Ayes? Mr. Lynch, what was your vote?
Aye.
Aye? So that passes.
There were five ayes.
Five. One, two, three, four, five. So that call-up is approved. Our next item is a public hearing to receive public comment regarding application for a transfer of ownership of a liquor license. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of the hearing is for the city council to receive evidence regarding the transfer of a retail liquor license, specifically retail liquor license from Golden Ticket LLC, DBA Painted Lady, to Joko LLC, DBA Queen City Saloon. The applicant has, application, excuse me, has been reviewed by the city clerk's office and staff of the Wyoming Liquor Commission, and they have determined the application is complete. Notice of the application has been published in a newspaper of local circulation once a week for two consecutive weeks. Anyone present who wishes to speak to the council regarding the application should approach the podium, state their name and mailing address, and present testimony. No one will be cross-examination, cross-examined by those who approach the podium, may be asked questions by members of the council. The issue in this hearing are set forth in Section 4-9 of the Evanston City Code, which provides that a license or permit shall not be transferred if the city council find from the evidence presented at the hearing that the welfare of the people residing in the vicinity of the proposed transfer permit premises shall be adversely and seriously affected. The purpose of this chapter would not be carried out by the transfer of the license or permit. The number, type, or location of existing licenses or permits meets the needs of the vicinity under consideration. The desires of the residents of the city will not be met or satisfied by transfer of the license, or any other reasonable restriction or standard imposed by the city council will not be carried out by transfer of the license. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the transfer of the liquor license? There is none. Do any members of the council have any questions?
I have to recuse myself on this vote.
I don't have any questions. I guess the only question, I guess the applications are all in order, is that correct? Everything's squantum? Okay. I have nothing. Anybody else have any?
I make a motion to pass.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second to approve this transfer of liquor license. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to see this license back in action. It would be good, so.
Are we still, are we, are we okay to vote on this now, or do we need to? Yes. Okay.
Okay, I don't know if we close the public hearing or not.
I didn't know either. Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any other further discussion? There's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Our next item is a couple of board appointments. We've got a new appointment. As you might know, Mr. Perks, because of his employment situation, has resigned from the Human Services Joint Powers Board, and we thank him very much for his long service there. How many years?
Since I was first appointed by Mayor.
Davis.
Davis.
Really?
Yep.
Long time.
First board I was ever on. And I'll miss it.
Your service there is appreciated. But I'd like to bring forth the name of David Welling in the council to take that vacancy on the Human Services Joint Powers Board, as well as consideration of Peter Howard to be reappointment, reappointed to, to a position on the tree board. Both of those positions would be ending in January of 2026, if somebody would like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks? Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Any discussion?
Do me proud, David.
If there's no discussion, no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I guess I don't vote on that, sorry. Any opposed? That is approved, and we thank Mr. Howard. Mr. Welling is. We go to our consent agenda. We've got a street closure request for St. Mary Magdalene Church. Has this already happened? This street closure? Or is our date wrong?
The date was wrong.
Okay.
It shouldn't be wrong on this one.
It's on my agenda, is what I've got.
Oh, it's probably right on, yes.
I think I didn't change the date.
No, I didn't. I just looked.
Wrong on here.
It's coming Sunday.
Coming Sunday. Either way, I think it's a good thing. They did it last year, and I think they did it, maybe even the year before, but then we've also got a parade route request from, also from St. Mary Magdalene Church for the procession on December 10, as well as a limited malt beverage permit on the veterans' board. Is there a motion on our consent agenda?
It says the ninth on the permit. I'll make that motion.
Whatever the date is.
Whatever the date is.
We're making a motion, whatever the date is.
I'll second it.
It's right on here.
Yeah. It's right on here.
We've got a motion in a second on our consent agenda items. Is there any discussion?
Is the parade route by St. Mary Magdalene Church, is that for a parade of the critters as well?
No, the parade route is.
Is different.
The procession of the.
Processors.
Yeah, it's.
Guadalupe.
It's at Christmas time. Guadalupe procession.
Yes.
Church to the machine shop.
Yes.
Yep.
The blessing of the animals, everybody takes their animals over there and.
Love it.
Yeah.
The blessing of Sunday, October 8.
Yes.
Correct.
Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That approves our consent agenda.
Nope. Nope. Isn't that the malt beverage? Is that part of it?
That was part of it.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
A false.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. We have no unfinished business, and we'll go to new business, and we'll there consider a motion to approve a change order number one for the police department. Car, in-car computers, Chief Rannish.
Yes, sir, this is a pretty simple, it's actually a reduction in cost. This has been a kind of a long, ongoing project. I know the United States can build a ship every 13 hours during the Second World War, but for some reason, getting in-car computers has been a year-long process. It's, and part of the issue is we got four different entities trying to communicate and get everything in line to make it happen between Motorola Solutions, the courts, Gazelle, and just getting it all, getting it all lined up. But this basically is just a change order for reduction in cost. We're already significantly under budget, and this will put us under budget even more. This is reducing our cost an additional $14,164 in equipment and modules we don't need in the system.
We don't, we don't get many change orders, as you mentioned. We don't get many change orders that reduces our cost, and so part of me wants to say we need to pass this as quickly as we can before somebody changes their mind. I think this is great. Any questions on this, on this particular issue?
Nope, I'll make a motion to pass.
Mr. Lynch, making a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved.
Thank you, sir.
I wonder if anybody's ever opposed something they've already approved.
And why would you approve a, why would you oppose a reduction in, in cost? So that's excellent. Thank you.
Washington probably, too.
Well, okay. Our next item, Representative Conrad, welcome, appreciate your patience. You have a discuss, item you'd like to discuss with us. Please go ahead, sir.
Mayor, members of the council, with a favorable tone, it's already been set, this timing is perfect. I want to share with you this onion. I want to also make the note that, as I look at the seal that the city of Evanston has, the word opportunity, and I think my remarks today will capture both of those, specifically as I indulge, or your indulgence in this would be greatly appreciated, because in the effort, in the last several weeks, I've been researching extensively, visiting with other representatives, including the Wyoming Department of Health, the Alliance for the Historic Wyoming, community members, as well as reading about 10 years, in fact, almost 10 years, of meeting minutes from the State Building Commission, which is not an entertaining endeavor. But also visiting with the Department of Interior, et cetera. So as I peel back this onion as it relates to the Wyoming State Hospital, I want to share with you a number of learnings that I, that I have uncovered that I think is important for the council. My proposal will be later in this, but your indulgence, again, would be greatly appreciated. The hospital, as you likely know, or probably recall, was established in 19, or rather, 1887. It was constructed over the course of 40 years. And I'm going to fast forward just a little bit. The asylum, as it was called then, has state significance, because the buildings, their architecture, and other ones have a significant relevance to the energy, or more importantly, engineering, and the decor at that time, and contemporary trends at that point. And secondly, the asylum is significant to the state of Wyoming, because from its inception to the present, the institution has served the population of the entire state of Wyoming as its only institution of the terminally, or rather, treatment of the mentally ill. Third, which I wasn't aware of until I started digging into this extensively, is that on the 27th of February, 2003, the United States Department of Interior National Park Service denoted the campus, the old campus, as I refer to it today, as a national register of historic places. It's actually on the register. Fourth, and I preface this question with a question, has anyone been to the House Chamber and/or Senate Chamber in the state of Wyoming, as well as the state Supreme, or the state Supreme Court building? The gentleman who designed that actually was named William DeBois, DeBoys, however you want to pronounce that. He designed those buildings, but what's interesting in the tie to that is actually, he designed a number of those buildings as we speak about at the state campus today, the Wyoming State Hospital. The asylum has an incredible history here on this local level. It's been a dominant feature of the Evanston landscape physically, socially, and economically since 1887. The Wyoming State Insane Asylum was established by the Wyoming Territorial Legislature in 1886. It preceded statehood. While the government responsibility for the care and treatment of the mentally ill is taken for granted today, it was an idea less than 50 years old in the 1880s, and prior to that, in the 1840s, the mentally ill were often stigmatized, demon-ridden, and incurable. The indignant were housed in prison-like asylums, while the wealthy used private caretakers. You're likely aware of the study that was done in December of 2021 called the Myers-Andersen Report, probably have heard of that. I just want to share with you a few remarks from that, as we talk about opportunity and our council, or more importantly, our community. This campus presents great opportunity for the repurposing of buildings, and the campus to continue its social and economic benefit to the community and to the state. While the buildings and campus no longer serve the needs of the Wyoming State Hospital, they are strong candidates for successful rehabilitation, as been accomplished on numerous similar projects locally and across this country. It is acknowledged that the redevelopment will require significant cooperation on the state and local levels for success. With that background, I ask for your indulgence, but more importantly, your favorable consideration, that we, more importantly, you as a council, in the city of Evanston, write a letter, an appeal, the State Buildings Commission, to the demolition of those buildings that are scheduled for July of 2024. Also, that we see see, as well, Stefan Johansson, the director of the Wyoming Department of Health, and also Jerry Vincent, the director of State Construction. I believe additionally, as I'll pursue tomorrow in front of the UN Economic Development Commission meeting, educating them on the information that I did not have, when I originally stated I was against the respective letter of support. As I mentioned earlier, as I peel back this onion, and the amount of material that I found throughout this research, it was quite evident in this period that unfortunately, the city of Evanston nor UNA County was properly represented. I believe we have an opportunity in this case. I would ask that within the letter of the city of Evanston, contained within this objective, to delay, if not stop, this demolition that's scheduled for July of 2024, that we, as I mentioned, we, considering the UN Economic Development Commission, myself as well as a representative for House District 19, that we preserve and protect the historic and economic opportunities the campus had and can provide. Additionally, they articulate that there is plans for repurposing the campus that identifies a sustainable, a vibrant, and development that is complementary to this community. There are private investors who have the means monetarily, engineering, and the staff to accomplish such an effort. Understanding the United States, more importantly, the Wyoming Constitution clearly articulates that the, enabled to take that state land, it has to be offered to bid. I'd like to see that happen. I think it's critical to us, the citizens of this community, as well as those and others of this community, that we enable those who are pursuant to endeavor to correct, build for residential use, commercial and nonprofit educational use, public and private partnerships, and community uses. Ladies and gentlemen, it's critically important that the window for this demolition is closing fast. It's July of 24, as I've already stated. The Wyoming State Legislature has allocated between 15 millions and 39 million that has been earmarked for this permanent demolition. The opportunity to stop and pause this till the respective individuals, private entities have an opportunity to submit their plan to the state board, State Building Commission, is critically important. I think we owe it to our predecessors, the present, and more importantly, the future residents of UNA County, to protect, preserve, and also repurpose these critical historic buildings that have a truly a viable future for generations to come, and I would ask your support and favorable consideration in supporting me, as well as UNA Economic Development Commission, to write this letter, that we can stop this, or at least pause this, to allow the respective folks to engage and demonstrate their willingness, and have already received letters of commitment, and also letters of credit from respective individual developers that have the means, the ways, and the knowledge and education to pursue such a thing. With that being said, I can talk for a number of hours, but I won't. I will share with you as well that as recently as I dug through the respective information, that as recently as July, or rather, January 13 of 2021, it was stated to the SLIBS, State Lands and Investment Board, the five top elected officials in this state, quote, "The renovations have been started on the old hospital that we were used, that will be used for administration. Work has already begun, and there is approximately 48 respective programs," or more importantly, Work has already begun, and there is approximately 48 respective programs, or more importantly, projects, that have been undertaken in the past 10 to 15 years to restore, rebuild, and continue the operation of those. Unfortunately, in '21, there was an effort by the Department of Corrections to take some material. I found that respective order, but sadly, at this point, I can't tell you what they took, where they took. That inventory, at this point, is lost, but I continue to track that. I understand, and I, and more importantly, it was my understanding in this case, that the state hospital buildings were in complete disaster beyond economically repair. That information is wrong. I've also been able to uncover and have received an actual plan that articulates verbatim the definitive plan, the project timeline for the respective efforts that this individual would do. Again, understanding the Constitution, they would have to go through a bidding process, but this gentleman here has the opportunity, and again, the endeavors to do so. We would undertake, allow that individual to take an acquisition process, which is to the State Lands and State Building Commission. The application is here. Let's allow these individuals to pursue this by delaying the demolition, which is not a reversible path. And again, I'll conclude my remarks by thanking you for your time, your indulgence, but more importantly, asking you for your support, and offer you any other opportunity to ask me any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you mention, if I, if you did, I asked, did you mention a timeframe that you would like to entertain, that you'd want to see as far as a delay, if that were to be approved or decided upon?
Sure.
What's your, what's your timeframe?
That's a great question. I, I think it's critically important to ensure that the timeframe is not in perpetuity. Let's ask for a year. Let's push that back to July of '25, and allow the respective individuals to put together a plan, submit that to the State Building Commission, so that they have an understanding, and more importantly, our support as we pursue this endeavor. Again, there's been 15 million, if not 39 million, allocated for this project. Let's return that money back to the states, and allow a person, or persons, who's ever successful to pursue an opportunity that would address a great number of issues. Specifically, as we look at north of us, the Chamber of Terror Power, the economic development opportunities are incredibly large. We need a place for them to stay, but more importantly, we need to take care of our residents who are low income and other endeavors. We don't have the housing for those folks now. As I report out in UNA Economic Development Commission, the amount of housing is flat, if not declining. There is no housing for people. It's about opportunity. A year, Mr. Mayor.
When this was first brought to the Economic Development Committee, I was one of the people that said, yes, we need to explore this, because I'm afraid the state's going to turn that into a parking lot for semis. That scares me to death. But putting this into private hands in some form or fashion to add economic development to this county and this community would be great. I am sure there's a lot of steps that need to be gone through, but I am very concerned that the state demolishing that is not going to have the interest of UNA County or this city in mind. So it first came to the Economic Development Commission.
Yeah, Mr. Lynn, you're correct, and I was one of the, and admittedly, standing in front of you, I was the one that pushed back and stated that the legislation, legislature, rather, had already approved the demolition. Again, I didn't have all the information, and it's taken some time, but I stand before you, knowing now that the decision I made, or more importantly, pushing back and/or the legislation that I approved, was a mistake. So I humbly admit that to you, but I want to right this wrong, at least give those who have an opportunity to bid and pursue development.
Anything can always be done better in private hands than it can be with the government. I'm sorry.
Really? What is your, what is your advice as far as, if we were to write such a letter, what, by what timeframe would this need to be submitted, to whomever, and whomever would this letter be submitted to? To the SLIB board, to the governor, to?
No, this, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This bill, this letter, including our letter and other letters, will be directly addressed to the State Building Commission. The State Building Commission is made up of the five top elected officials. They are the ones that have the keys, or more importantly, the levers now to pursue the demolition or pause that. That's based on research that I have recently uncovered today. If we, or more importantly, the city of Evanston wanted to purchase that outright, that would have to go to the SLIB. But in this other opportunity, which I understand and respectfully agree with you, that the challenges that were presented eight years ago for the city of Evanston to pursue the, I guess, the deeded property, et cetera, so forth, the financial means weren't there. But in 2023, we should pursue the pause, which goes to the State Building Commission, and allow them and/or others, whoever is the top bidder, to pursue this opportunity. The plan is, the plan is extremely well done. It has been articulated, as I mentioned earlier, very, very well done, with a timeline that's already included. It has a Phase One and a Phase Two, as an example, an approach where a private investor hasn't already engaged with his respective engineers, drafters, et cetera, so forth, that in this case, it would allow, as we talked about, they would work with the Wyoming Business Council, city of Evanston, Chamber of Commerce, use its own resources to complete the due diligence process and the feasibility assessment, or an awareness, prepare a comprehensive redevelopment strategy for the site, present a proposed redevelopment plan to the state, which I just spoke about, and then enter into a development agreement with the state of Wyoming, terms of the control for the site.
Are you, are you, are you suggesting that in this letter, we support this plan that you have, or would we open it up to others that might also be?
Based on the Constitution, the, the state has to go through the process of bidding. So that is up to you guys as well. We understand that. I can't get, or we can't get around the state constitution, but I will share with you, and having met with the gentleman, and more importantly, receiving a number of letters of credit, this isn't a pipe dream. He's demonstrated this experience before, has made it happen, and why wouldn't we pursue such an opportunity as a, as a city, as a county, and as a state?
And you will present this information tomorrow to the UNA County Economic Development?
That's correct. Mr. Lynn will have an opportunity to hear from me again.
Okay. Well, you've certainly given us some information to ruminate on. I, I don't know, I don't, I guess I'd like to think about this and, and look into a little bit, a few things myself. I, I appreciate the information. When, when, when are you looking for a decision from us? I assume sooner rather than?
Mr. Mayor, tomorrow?
As a city, we wouldn't really care for it. I'd like the government official to move.
I can't fault that.
I heard somebody laugh.
Nobody's laughing.
My concern, Mayor, respectfully, every day that passes.
Sure.
I mean, you know, I, I don't want the State Board, or the State Building Commission to award demolition contracts. I want to stop this now, because if that starts going out, as, as been said many times before, whatever analogy you want to use, the train is further away from the station than it ever has been.
Do you, in your position as a state representative, do you have some insight into when this bidding process might be?
I do.
And?
December.
December? Okay.
You know, th, these are quite historical buildings, and, and I was involved in some of those brainstorm meetings, the one we met at the state hospital, trying to figure out all the options. This is the best one I've seen. I have no problem opposing it. What I oppose is using city funds to do anything up there. We just can't afford that. This proposal, I can back.
I, respectfully, Mr. Perks, it, it's a no-brainer. I, I don't know how else to put that. Once those, once that dozer starts moving in place, there's no turning back. And as soon as we get on top of this, with that letter tomorrow, we can begin the process, and I will personally deliver that to the State Building Commission, myself, and also I have a letter going to Chief Perkins, as well as Governor Gordon. This is an opportunity for a win-win, truly a win-win, with a multitude of entities, agencies, but most importantly, community members.
So when we got the Myers-Anderson's report, and went through it, it said that, basically, that the campus was in better shape than people thought, that was exciting to me. And my, my issue was, I don't like government being in, in private, competing with private business, and the city of Evanston to try to, themselves to put, us to put something in, didn't make a lot of sense to me. And so, you know, private industry, private development, has always made entry.
Mr. Silver, thanks you for that. I just want to point out that I am a citizen of this county, and we are a citizen legislature. And believe it or not, I want to help. And this is the right thing to do from my perspective.
Do we need to make a motion as to throw support behind this?
What do you, what's your suggestion? We, I mean, I, I, I agree wholeheartedly with the, with the, the idea, and I've said in other settings, I agree wholeheartedly that, that anything done at this or any other location, for that matter, is best done in private hands and not, and not city or county, government hands. It's far better, better approached by, by the private sector. There's no question about that. My concern is, is that obviously, there's been, there's been a lot of water going into the bridge already.
Yeah.
And, and my fear is, is, is I don't want to see nothing happen. And my fear is, is that if, if, either it's good or bad, that the, the buildings stay or go down. I mean, I, I, my fear is, I don't want to really be talking about this one way or another in, in five years from now, or 10 years from now. I don't want to, I don't want to see that happen. But I, I will concede completely, wholeheartedly, that this would be best done in private hands than, than, than government hands.
And I resemble that remark.
We simply do not have, will not have, I don't foresee the situation where the city would ever have the resources to not only do anything with these buildings, but, but handle the ongoing cost associated with utilities and maintenance and all those things. We're, we're just not going to have anything close to what we, what we would need. And so in private hands, this is obviously a better scenario, so.
No, you're correct. And, you know, this isn't Teton County, thankfully, and that's the beauty of what we have here in UNA County.
Yeah.
And again, to your, addressing your concern, I'm not asking for a five or 10. I think if we could send that out to at least July of '25, it allows the respective developers to put together an articulate project timeline with milestones that will obviously convince them, more importantly, demonstrate to the state that they have the financial backing to pursue such an effort. And I will share with you publicly, the, the hospital's not even in my district, but I believe in it so much, because I'm a resident of this community.
One more question for you, Mr. Conrad. One of the people that sat in all those meetings with me was Councilman Schuler, who is now Senator Schuler. Saved me a phone call. What's her feelings on this?
Respectfully, I have not reached out to her yet, because I wanted to ensure that if there is any criticism, that I took it, and not put her, or subject her to that. But I believe favorably that the council, the mayor, as well as you, all of you, will make the right decision, and at that point, I will engage Senator Schuler, as well as Representative Berger, and we'll, we'll lead this fight. Thanks.
So basically, what we're, what you're asking for is a letter just not to say what we want done, but to say that we want it to postpone it for a year or so, options can be considered?
Absolutely. Based on information that's come to light.
Yep.
As, as we peel this back, we now have, we now have identified a, a person, an entity, that has a financial backing, has the plan, has the results demonstrated elsewhere, to pursue such an endeavor. I do not want to burden the county, or more importantly, in this case, the city. But I truly believe in my visit with them, that this gentleman has a financial backing, and again, disclaimer, that will go forbid, based on the Wyoming Constitution. But this, I, I, extremely credible, impressed, and I, I trust him. So to your earlier question, right, or maybe it was Mr. Welling, the letter would state just that, and I can help you draft that letter, if you ask for such assistance. Who I'm looking for is the city of Evanston, because that's what's going to be asked. The State Board, the State Building Commission's going to ask, what's, what's, what's the town think of this, or the city? And I can demonstrate that, look, they're fully on board to delay, to delay at least to July of '25, to allow private investors to come up with a plan and purchase the respective property that fills a multitude of needs for the city of Evanston and the county.
I don't think this property has been properly advertised for private use, myself. They give, has fallen to the wayside of the state and allowed them to not use it for its potential. So I think throwing our support behind this is great, even if it is, even if we get more bidders, or we get more people interested, even the better. That doesn't hurt this community at all, if we get even more people interested, so.
Please.
The council is educating if we're interested in looking at center and such correspondence, the staff, and I would welcome here to review a draft on something.
That would be great.
You could, you could look at that, and I would rely on Mr. Conrad.
That would be great. I think that would be beneficial, and I, I, I think that this, I, I might, like I said before, I'm just, I don't want to see this drag out one way or another, on and on and on. So I think if it was a, if it was a timeframe, a defined timeframe, I think I could be supportive of that, but I, I think that would be a great idea, if you do that, and then we could make a decision once we have the draft.
Time is also of the essence.
Right. All right.
I will share that this is analogous to what I've asked the respective mayors of UNA County to support in a letter that I have sent to the governor, as well as his staff, as well as the task force on the state shooting complex, that UNA County is a player in this, that we want to be a part of this for the development and opportunities that exist in this county, which is the gateway in the beginning of U, oh, Wyoming, not, not the back door.
Yeah. Well, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Lynn, and I, I do, I do recognize that time is of the essence, but I think even if we were to write, even if, whatever we would do, it would have to be an approval at the next meeting, because we would have to read what we were going to approve. Is that not correct? So that's the soonest we could do it, no matter what.
Could we have a special meeting after the work session, where we could all look at it during the work session, and then have a special council meeting to?
I guess that would depend on Mr. Harris's ability to put that together.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harris, may I offer a, a suggestion? Draft the letter and send it to the respective council members and the mayor, and get their approval via electronically?
Still a meeting?
Yeah, still after we have a meeting. Still have to have a meeting.
Oh, or they have a meeting.
Would a, an onion convince you otherwise?
I'm not opposed to have a special meeting.
I guess I wouldn't be opposed to a special meeting if we needed to do that.
I think we need to move on it as quick as we can.
Speed it up as fast as we could.
If next week's as quick as we can, then let's have a special meeting. I will be gone with my anniversary, so.
Lucky you, my, my wife's birthday's tonight, and I'm here.
Our next regular meeting is the 17th.
17th.
The 10th, you have to go.
If we did that, then that would be.
17th, 17th.
Can we do the special?
I just, I'm asking again, 17th.
Is that soon enough, or do we need to, to try a special meeting next week?
The 5th would be desirable.
I guess I will, I will, if, if that's conceivable as far as the drafting of that letter, that, if that works, if that could be done, I don't have a problem with that. That would be, can we do that? Diane, you're going to be involved with that as well, as far as the advertising and stuff.
We'd be looking at the 10th.
Okay.
Mayor, may I follow up with one action item, or more importantly, one piece of information I think would be beneficial for not only you, but the residents of Evanston?
Uh huh. Please.
I want to share with you that we're making progress as it relates to the Rocky Mountain power increase of some 30%.
Oh, good.
We have actually engaged, and I've sent letters as well, we've got an incredible amount of people behind us, and the likelihood, and we're putting pressure on the Public State Services Commission to ensure that that doesn't come to fruition. So that effort continues extensively and with a great deal of pressure, so we continue, I continue to work on that heavily for the residents as, this, this. So we continue, I continue to work on that heavily for the residents of this county.
Appreciate that.
And thank you. We've heard a lot about that, so thank you.
And then, before we close the meeting, I don't know that, I probably failed to identify a date, or do we need to identify a date for Mr. Osterling's hearing for his call-up?
I think we're kind of bound by the notification.
Right.
And so let, it would be December 7th, November 7th.
November 7th would be the date for that? Okay. I just wanted, didn't know if we needed to identify that date specifically, and I failed to do that. Thank you. Okay, so that'll, fine, okay, then that's set. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Appreciate the information and discussion. Department remarks. Anybody else down back there? Mr. Robinson? Mr. O'Neil? Anybody back there? Ms. Lim? Mr. Chief Rannish?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Larson back there? Anything? Okay. Ms. Harris?
No, Harris.
Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir.
Did I miss anybody?
Public.
Yeah. We'll go to public participation. Is anybody here from the public that would like to address the council for any reason? Please, Merrill, come on up.
No, I'm just, you know, I've been here a lot lately. You know, I have a big mountain, I've been on that for years. But I'm really surprised you're calling out Mr. Osterling's petition because he did not even bother to show up for his last meeting, his September 11th meeting, where we made our final decision with planning and zoning. So that he's being able to come back again and be reviewed is amazing to me. And I, you know, why planning and zoning is having to do that job and then get cake to the teeth is becoming a little bit ridiculous.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up here. Mr. Osterling.
Yeah, my project, it started years ago. I pulled the driveway from this garage in '96, so it's been quite some time. My wife and I decided the first year, we wanted to put in a garage. And since then, she has had a stroke, and it has put me on a timeframe to try to get her home into a home that's 800 square foot. I'm having to move everything out of my house, and the shed I had put on the lot was a temporary, instead of the U-Pods, the orange units being brought out, I bought a temporary shed to get as much stuff out of my home as possible. I missed the meeting on the 11th because my son, which is not here, took me out to Jalisco's for dinner, and I got food poisoning and was sick, almost had to go to the hospital for a week, and that's when I missed the meeting on the 11th. And I had, that's the only excuse I can give for the meeting.
I appreciate that. And quite honestly, what I would say is, that would be a discussion for our November 7th meeting, so that would be great. That information is wonderful, I appreciate you, but truly speaking, that's probably best, that discussion and that is, information is probably best saved for that November 7th.
Yeah, and the only thing about that shed was that as soon as the garage is built, I've already got it given away to be removed from my property because I don't want it where it's at. It's in front of my front windows, and I just don't want the stuff there. I want a garage so I can pull my wife's car off the street and have a dry place for me to roll her, to get her into a vehicle.
Again, come back on the December, on November 7th, and we'll?
And I'm not going to be able to do any building until springtime anyway, so.
Come back November 7th, and we'll talk about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council tonight?
I have a question. I'm still unclear. Are we having a special session on the 10th?
I think so.
Approve this letter?
That's what I was wondering.
Is that what?
Is that what's going on?
Is that what your understanding, Mr. Harris?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
I'm all for it. Yeah.
Okay. So it's the 10th, we have a special session. Is that, Representative Conrad, the 10th is as soon as we can get you that letter, but we can approve it on the 10th in the special session if it's drafted, and we can go through it in the work session, and then you can have it in your hot little hands.
Mayor, a second, and that would be wonderful.
So the hopes would be to get a letter from the Economic Development Commission tomorrow?
Which I'm pursuing tomorrow.
Hopefully get a letter on the 10th from the city, and then you would deliver all those letters, all that communication?
Personally.
Personally, at what point?
As soon as I have your letter. I believe I'll be successful tomorrow. And so the day after I receive your letter, I'll ensure that that is in their hands.
Cool. Great. Excellent.
I'm sorry? I'll find out tomorrow as I visit with Commissioner Hatch.
Okay. Anything else we can talk about tonight, anybody? We will adjourn then.